Podcast has been set.
Thank you. The time is now five oh six and I called to order the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Um, good evening and thank you all for being here. Thank you all committee members for being here. Uh, my name is Albert Soren Reese, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and student member of the board. Uh, brings me great pleasure to be here tonight and I would like to start with introductions. Um, firstly, our board committee members, followed by administration staff, board office staff and legal counsel.
I'll go ahead Pamela Boozer Struther, District Three, uh, Board of Education Member, Member of the Committee.
Mr. Briggs. Okay. Administration.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Good evening, Dennis Whitley, Law Offices of Shipley and Horn, Board Counsel.
Cindy Adle, what? I'm should it's secretary for the board office.
Thank you, everyone. And I see, uh, we have a board member visiting, uh, visiting us today. Um, Dr. Miller, would you like to say hello? If you do.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Alrighty, so we'll move on to adoption of tonight's meeting agenda. I may have a motion to adopt the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
I moved to adopt the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee agenda.
Is there a second? Second.
You're gonna have to second.
Second. Um, it's been moved in second, um. So, um, it's been moving second to adopt the April eighteen, uh, meeting agenda. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passage and is adopted. Alrighty, approve of committee meetings. Um, have a motion to adopt the, well, to approve the March twenty-eighth, I mean, a minute, meeting minutes.
I move, uh, to approve the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, uh, Policy and Governance Committee meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Second. It's been properly moved. Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve the March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, meeting minutes. Uh, any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Um, tonight, public comment, there is one registered public comment speaker this evening. They're here. They're not here, Miss Allen.
No, she's got the house yet.
Okay, so I'll save my breath. If she comes later, I'll read the speech, the speech. Alrighty, um, so moving on to three point O legislative update, uh, so we'll do a, um, May legislative committee meeting update with Mrs. Welsh.
So, um, we actually have not had a May legislative committee meeting since, um, April tenth, I mean, prior to April tenth. And we do have one scheduled for next week on the Monday of which then, um, they will, uh, uh, may be will go through all the bills that passed or didn't pass. Uh, I do want to point out that, um, the General Assembly has thirty days to move the bills over to the, um, over to the, um, um, governor and then if the governor pay either doesn't sign at all or signs it, then the bill is passed. If the governor vetoes a bill, then of course then the bill does not move forward. So, um, we're right in the middle of that thirty day period, um, and then we should know more. I do, I did have Cindy put on the, on the, our website, the, um, the agenda, just these quick notes from final outcomes from May that, um, they did provide some general information right now about these bills, but it's not very comprehensive. And next Monday, we should be getting a comprehensive report about all the bills.
Thank you. So I look forward to that. Um, we'll have a more comprehensive report, um, of everything for next meeting. Um, moving on to, um, blueprint implementation update, Ms. Boozer Struther.
Thank you so much. Um, as we, uh, went ahead and posted, uh, the, um, actual PG CPS, uh, implementation plan that was submitted to the, uh, Blueprint Accountability Board, um, and MSD known as, you know, the AIB. And I encourage all board members to, um, read this in depth. It will be presented to the board at a future agenda and I don't, I don't know if, um, Chair McInnes Murray with us, Chair McInnes Murray, do you know if this is on the April agenda? Was this chosen for the April? Twenty seventh.
Uh, I, I did not put it on this, uh, April twenty-seventh agenda. It doesn't mean that I can't put it on there. Um, we do have the legislative update, so I can adjust it, uh, to include this. Are, are you ready to record out? Is the administration ready to record out?
Well, that I, I, that's my question is if administration has consulted with you on a date and if that date was as. Okay.
You want me to check with him? I can.
Yeah, that, that would be great. And, uh, you know, this, uh, was posted to the PG CPS website and, you know, since our last Policy and Governance Committee meeting. So it's
Okay.
first time we're officially posting it here for our, uh, oversight role that we've been, uh, doing to ensure that it's everything that our board colleagues need to, to be tracking happens out of our committee. So, um, the ad hoc committee of May, uh, you know, as, as being an ad hoc committee meets when needed and that next meeting has not been called yet, but I of course will report on that when it happens. So, uh, that's my report for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from committee members?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, when the, uh, what is the timeline or has the Policy and Governance Committee, uh, decided how and when we're going to update our handbook? Because there are a lot of policies that we have, uh, recently voted on and approved. And then there are some that will need to be updated once, um, the, um, government signs any new legislation that impacts the, uh, school system. So is there, um, has the committee developed a timeline? Or even consider when this, um, can be done?
So we have not, but I would suggest, um, taking the, um, summer interim to do such a thing. Um, just because of the length that is the board handbook. Um, and so taking the interim to, you know, whenever there is an opportunity to, um, go through and revise or make updates. So then, when we have our Policy and Governance Committee for the following, um, school year, um, they may approve or not approve whatever, um, uh, proposed alterations are, you know, being proposed. So I see your hand, Ms. Welsh.
Oh, I just wanted also, I also wanted to say that as far as updating the policies, uh, as they get approved through the, uh, through the board. Um, Chair McInnes Murray is very good about sending to Dr. Golson, uh, memos that say these are the most recently, uh, enacted policies and, um, I do get copied on that and we have the, um, our communications department immediately upload or replace the old one with the new one. So I, I think we're up to date on all the policies that have gone through the process.
But okay, I understand that process, Rob, and I was just asking, when is it going to be, uh, updated in the handbook?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm not talking about, I, I understand the process and, uh, you know, that process. My concern is that we still have a handbook out there on our, uh, webpage or websites and in the public domain that do not show these, uh, current, you know, the update. I mean, uh, many of them, not just for this year, even, you know, for the past couple of years. They have not, it has not been updated. So I just wanted to know, you know, uh, how it will it be? Uh, is the policy committee recommending that this be a full board project? Cause Alvaro, you'll be gone anyway during the summer. So do you recommend that this be a full board project or, um, how? But we do need to update the handbook and I would love to see that the publication would be, uh, available this coming twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will sit down, um, with the Vice Chair, the committee and then board leadership as well, um, to discuss when such a thing, um, can be done, um, just because of the, you know, where we are in terms of the school year and then our work plan that we're still trying to, you know, meet our goal, uh, for this year. Um, so we'll sit down and talk about it. See your hand, Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing me. I, I just wanted to recap my understanding of where we had been, which was that this was a priority for the, uh, Board's Executive Director, um, back kind of like at the beginning of the, I guess what you'd say, the calendar year, the beginning of the school year and, um, a lot of policy changes are coming through. And now I, I would see this as a, as the Board Executive Directors, um, under their purview to make sure this handbook is updated and reviewed through, through leadership in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we will talk about this. So thank you, Dr. Miller, for bringing this up. Um, so I see that our public comment speaker is here. Um, so tonight we have one registered public comment speaker this evening. Um, so to registered speakers, you have been registered to speak in a public comment form before the Board of Education. We will listen to your comments. Uh, the board will not address your comments and all registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentations. Uh, registered speakers may relinquish, may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Uh, speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You may be warned once and if you continue, your comments will be muted. Um, speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, CEO, chair, board member, et cetera. Here's these guidelines will enable public participation process to move smoothly. So our speaker this evening is Shannon Reed, individual, to your attention, Ms. Reed.
Good evening. During the academic achievement meeting last night, I attempted to provide testimony about reading instruction in the hopes of providing insight that would create schedule changes, curricular changes, and policy changes to support the reading development of struggling readers. So many things happened before mine, stable connection transmitted a disjointed and incomplete testimony. We all know things happen, but the incident illustrates some of the struggles that make it difficult to retain teachers. Teachers are struggling to be heard at board meetings and in terms of curriculum planning and priorities. The discussions and presentations on the screen at all meetings need to align with the reality of teaching, learning and administration. In a discussion about how injustice distorts power, Andy Kraut shares that the poor remain poor because someone is playing God in their lives. In the same way, teachers are being exploited by consuming their strengths and potential based on distorted roles. Injustice has no care nor regard for an individual's true well-being. Many students are unengaged and unbothered as long as you don't tell them the five bad words, no, don't stop, wait or work. Everything is good. If you disturb some students, they react. This year, a student with terrible attendance and poor work habits created and gathered student signatures to have me fired for quote, not teaching to understanding. Thirty-four of the fifty-five visible signatures were students I don't know at all. This incident captures how comfortable students are using slander, misconduct and destructiveness to avoid work because there are no consequences for actions and no critical thinking that looks beyond superficial reasons for real underlying causes. It also shows how teachers alone bear the weight of overempower in underdeveloped students. This is why teachers are worn out, stressed out and looking for a way out. So many things have happened that it is clear that PG CPS needs policies and governance to adjust, address a significantly unsustainable workload, student misconduct and ineffective data tracking. Addressing these factors with stabilized teaching and learning, this would be true kindness. Real kindness demonstrates God's great love for people, especially when facing hard realities. In truth, current teachers will remain in the classroom and prospective teachers will come to PG CPS. If it works to connect its presentations to the reality of teaching and learning, prioritizes empowering teachers with support and development, restores academic integrity and establishes norms to restore students' roles as learners. Addressing these things will restore dignity, strength and sanity. Additionally, PG CPS's response to teachers who say, no, that's not quite right. Don't forget to consider this. Stop this from happening. Wait and listen to this and work on this would demonstrate its real regard for teachers. This care would attract and retain certified teachers. Maybe the discouraged and retired will return too. That would make PG CPS truly powerful. That is my prayer for PG CPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Alrighty, moving along. Colleagues, we have three policies tonight for discussion. Um, we'll adhere to our five-minute, three-minute rules for discussion. Uh, but our first policy is fifty-one ten point three, which is the transfer of students. So you have the floor, Ms. Welsh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you want to acknowledge that Board Member and Vice Chair Fields has joined us?
Yes. So I see Vice Chair Fields has joined us. Would you like to say hello?
Uh, good afternoon. I apologize for being a little tardy today. I was had another meeting, uh, directly before this one. Good to be here.
No worries. And Board Chair McInnes Murray, would you like to say hello?
Thank you, Chair. I surround you with, I had another meeting that ran up against this meeting, so I too, um, thank you for acknowledging me. Appreciate it. Hi, everybody.
Really, thank you for being here. Alrighty, this time, Ms. Welsh, turn to you.
Okay, um, before I, um, talk about any other changes to the transfer of students, um, policy, student transfer policy, I wanted to, um, answer questions. Last, last time we met, there were a good number of questions related to, uh, just transfers in general. Um, so I'm just going to go through the questions and give you the answers that I was able to find. Um, and then from there I can, uh, provide the one change I did add to the, uh, policy. And then of course, any changes that you all want to add to the policy, then, um, we can do that. So the fir- uh, first question, uh, one of the questions was, what would, what have been the numbers of transfers requests? And the transfers that have occurred over the past several years. So and school year two twenty, uh, twenty twenty, there were three thousand and sixty transfers. Then in, um, school year twenty-one, there were only three hundred and thirty-six transfers. Then in school year twenty-two, there were twelve hundred and forty transfers. Then this past school year, there were, uh, six hundred and fifty-nine, um, transfers that were granted. Now this, I am, she, um, Gail Huggins, who's responsible for all the transfer stuff that's going on. She shared this information with me and she said that that six hundred and fifty-nine includes a hundred and ninety-three student transfer requests that, uh, received during the summer. Um, during the summer student transfer window. And the summer window opened on eight, uh, August first, twenty twenty-two and closed on August fifth, twenty twenty-two. So within that four days, they received a hundred and ninety-three requests, uh, for those parents that had missed the April transfer request. So and then four hundred and sixty-six student transfers were granted outside of the student transfer windows for the following listed, uh, reasons. And these are the reasons. Um, either was a safety reason, she just, this is what she gave me, uh, bullying, harassment, intimidation, discipline, uh, giving the student a fresh start, medical or psychological reasons, change of residence during the school year, foster care, gang-related, uh, transfer, employee-based, uh, like an employee who requested have their child transferred, special education administrative transfer, uh, ESOL sibling transfer. Um, so that was the information she provided related to the numbers. Um, then another question was, uh, when is the list and the information communicated? So the actual list of available schools are, are communicate, is communicated a week or, uh, a week or two right before the transfer window is open and, um, the projected enrollment has been established. Uh, and then they publish the available list. So, um, I, I said, well, why, why so up to the last minute would you do this? And it's because the number, our numbers are constantly changing in the schools, our enrollment numbers, because students come and go and whatever. And they, they are always making sure that their numbers as accurate as possible when that window opens. And they, and of course they're not, they're going to open it up against the last count that they did. She gave me, it's a pretty lengthy process of how they gather this information, then it goes to this communication. It goes back and forth until they finally get a point where they can identify which schools are applicable, are able to be, uh, um, be available for transfers. But I do want to point out that when a parent goes into transfer, she explained this to me, there's a portal for parents to go in and they put in the information and the school that they would like. And not only though are they looking at numbers for the state rated capacity, which is ninety percent. Um, anything over that, they're not going to allow a transfer into the school. But if you're a school that's below ninety percent, then they're also going to look at the numbers within the grade levels. So, and it's not uncommon to have a school where maybe you have several of the grades that are fairly low numbers. And you know, the school itself is below the ninety percent capacity. However, you might have a grade level where you have very high levels that go way beyond what is acceptable for a, a class size. And therefore they, um, then if you're a parent who has, has applied for a transfer to the school that's available, but to the, to that particular grade level, then they would deny that transfer. And they do throughout the process as you're, as a parent, as you're completing, going into the portal, she said, it does bring that to your attention so that you know that just because you hit on available school, it's not a hundred percent like you're going to get it because of the fact that it depends also on the class size for each of the grade levels. Um, and she said that, um, generally speaking, what they strive for is that for the transfer period to be the first Monday of the first week in April and then they limit it to three weeks. So the transfer period just opened up on April fourth and it'll be open for the next three weeks. And then they have the second transfer period, which is July tenth to August fourth. And that picks up also new students that you possibly have moved into the county as well as any parent that missed the transfer period and the, uh, the April transfer period, they can also then apply during that period of time. Then the next, uh, question that was asked was how is this, uh, communicated to parents? And so, um, they have a, um, they, first of all, they, on their landing pages in, uh, in the, um, um, the, um, the webs, on the website, they have links to, to the information related to, um, transferring. And there's a whole thing, it says how to request a student transfer. Um, and then they also have a drank, a direct link to the, uh, homepages of the, uh, schools where the available schools, uh, sit. They also have a direct link to the list of the available schools. Um, then they have, uh, what's called week, a weekly video news update, which is what to know this week and, um, uh, this past year on Sunday, March twenty-sixth, they, um, then talked about the transfer period opening for April fourth. And there's cross-promoted on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, and then newsletters that go out. Um, also an e-blast goes out to all families, um, um, and, um, talks about student transfer season, what to know. And that went out on March twenty-eighth. So, uh, actually a person that works in my office, I said, and her child goes to, um, to a school, which I don't even know if it's on the list or not, but I said, did you get a read? Did you get an e-blast that told you that the transfer period has just opened up? And she said, yes, I did. Uh, and I said, was, do you recall if it was like a March twenty eighth? She says at the end of March. So they're sending that out to all the parents. Also in the Engage PG CPS Newsletter that goes out to all, to families. Um, and we always get a copy on our emails. Um, that get, that went out on March twenty-seven. It says student transfer season, what to know. And when the season, right before the season opens up, if you go even to the website now, there is, and, and you know, they have these pictures that sort of you can click on the, on the very first page, uh, that are like the critical things that are happening right now. That is there for the parents also so that they can click on that. So that, so that's what they, um, do as far as the, um, uh, communication. And then the next question was, well, what about, um, the, um, how did the boundary changes impact the transfers, this transfer process? So they did share in the per- parent portal, the information, they said that any schools impacted by boundary changes are not available for student transfer request. Um, now students entering fifth or eighth grade who are subject to a boundary change are eligible to remain at their current school. So, and I can understand that if you've been in a school and you've gone all these years and now you, you would really want to finish your last year of that school, um, then they will allow that. Um, then, um, their, and their siblings may also remain just for one year, but then they have to, they would then, uh, have to go to the, the school they've been assigned to. And in all these instances, the, the parents are responsible for the transportation. Um, and then let's see, and, and then they said students impacted by a boundary change who are not entering fifth or eighth grade or their siblings are not eligible to remain at their current school. So that's how they are dealing with any of the boundary changes that occurred this past year. And then the question came up about the residency and do we verify residency on all of the transfer requests? So they do not verify residency. Um, in fact, um, they don't, once you've, so first of all, the process to register your student into the school system is pretty rigorous. And there's many requirements that we have to legally meet. The MSD sets up that in order to verify, to ensure that the, that student coming to school with that parent when they're registering a child is a residence of Prince George's County Public Schools. And so they do not, um, unless they, it's something comes up that's questionable, then they will go back in and check the residency. They, they, with a hundred and thirty thousand students, they don't have the ability to go in and check residency. I will say this is that we just went through the MSD audit, um, um, for state aid programs. And one of the things they did check was residency. And whether or not we had all of the verification for every single student that they pulled, I think they pulled close to two hundred students in this check because they, you know, a, a audit just picks up a certain percentage of students. And we did pass the audit. We had all the, the, uh, documentation that was required to verify residency for all the students that were selected in the audit. Um, so I, I think that, that was all the questions that, that was asked last week. Um, and so the only thing, the only change I made to the policy, but certainly I am open to any other changes. Um, I mean, we went through all the other changes the last time, but I did say, because, uh, uh, board member Boozer Strutter, you talked about communication and addressing it in the policy. And I did, uh, say the student, and this is an E, if you scroll down, Cindy, keep going. Do you get to, uh, it'll be under four, uh, for the standards? And then E. There, I said, that, I said, the student transfer, transfer season, um, the list of available schools in the process for parents, legal guardians to submit transfer requests shall be communicated via a variety of ways, such as community newsletters, emails and the PG CPS website. So that was the only change I did make, but certainly if there's any other changes you would like to see in the policy, I think we had to do those too.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues. Now open the floor for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? See Vice Chair Fields.
Ms. Welsh, those reasons that you gave for the transfers, uh, was that in the actual hierarchy? So the first would be safety, um, bullying issues. Uh, does that mean that the preponderance of them were in that category and then the following categories as you listed them?
I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I, I'm thinking possibly not only because I think she probably just listed out all the reasons, but I can certainly check on that for you. To see what was that, like, what were the highest numbers of which of these items that seem to occur more frequently?
That, that would be helpful because I think, you know, when I hear bullying, when I hear, um, discipline and gang related, it suggests, um, a real need to focus on school climate. Um, I would hate to feel as though students are transferring simply because of the climate in the building. Um, because that's really disruptive to, um, a student. So if we could get that information, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I will, I'll check on it.
Alrighty. Board Member Brace, followed by Chair McInnes Murray.
Thanks, Chair Soren Reese. Um, so Ms. Welsh, I just had a question for you about the, um, the capacity piece. I know you talked about schools would need to be at ninety percent in order for, um, for a transfer to happen, but there's kind of this disparity where there could be classrooms that are at the correct level or they have fewer students within other classrooms that could be overpopulated. So I was just thinking for a parent who might be in that predicament, it sounds like what you, what I heard you saying was that they would be rejected from the school because the school as a whole wouldn't meet the, 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 um, the expectation. I just wanted to clarify if that was correct.
So if, if in fact the school has, um, under ninety percent capacity, then absolutely that, then that is an available school. However, if they go. However, if they go it so but if it's above the ninety percent, automatically the school never shows up on the list and they never even have the opportunity to request a transfer to the school. But if the school is one of the schools under the ninety percent, if in fact they go to a click, they decide that they put in their information about their child and it's a grade, I don't know, say grade one. And it finds out that every each one of the school, the classes in that grade level, may there may be four or five classes. Um each of them are like, say, I I don't know what number they they identify as the appropriate number, but let's just say above twenty five, which would be very, I think, high for first grade. Um then they would say these particular, this grade level is closed to uh transfers. Because when they start seeing numbers like uh jumping high in certain grade levels, I only know this from working in another system. They'll they'll even out those numbers at that grade level to make sure all the grades are, all the classes are, you know, equal numbers. But if once you start getting more and more kids, then at some point you have to say, no, we can't add any more first graders to that to that grade level.
Okay, got it. So I'm so I'm understanding it to be that it's really more about the different grade levels and if it's if this the student was transferring to the new school. Um and if that specific grade level was a capacity or not a capacity. Correct, okay.
Correct.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, Chair Mick Somer.
Uh thank you, Chair Serand Ruiz. Uh my question, how many, do we have a lot of parents complaining about not being able to uh transfer their child? Because I know a lot of it is preference of a a school location, uh quality of perception of life in the school, so. Do we get a lot of complaints?
That that I don't know, again, I would have to check, I checked to find out whether or not they do get a lot of complaints. I mean, there are numbers um this past year, I mean, that's pretty low, six hundred and fifty nine, so I don't know um. But I can, let me check to see. We'll be bringing it back so I can share that information.
Okay, I appreciate that and uh you gave us a comprehensive report, I believe. And then as I looked at it, it went down each year uh to this year, so. It it lends me to think that the majority of the parents are pretty satisfied, I guess. With the schools that their child are are currently reporting to, so it would be helpful uh for me to know if any parents are really complaining about where their children are.
Or remember Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um you know, one school opportunity that I'm realizing realizing is not in here and what could be impacted by deadlines and a parent realize at this point would be the online academy. Um I'm wondering if it might make sense to make sure the online academy is noted. Um that it also is a school that has capacity and you know, other concerns and um has been asked of me as a mid-year and of course, this time period transfer option, but it has its rules. I mean, is it treated as specialty or lottery? Like, is that what takes it out of this the way it's noted here?
I wish I could answer that question for you, but I'm gonna have to check it out for you. I was always under the I I was under the impression there were some criteria for for being into the online academy. But I can definitely find out for sure what is required. I I am, I don't know if if it's as easy as just being able to transfer into that or not.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking because it it's a little different around, like it is a it is considered a specialty school, that was made clear to us. But at the same time, it's also expandable. But is it, right? And I think
Right.
I make sense for for the online academy to maybe be noted in the what you need to know section um about about that on the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, colleagues, um so Ms. Welsh, if you could bring this back. Um the next meeting.
Okay, I will send it through the review process, uh if there's no other changes and get it approved and have it back for the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Alrighty, moving along, next policy is revised policy fifty one fourteen point one. Withdrawal of students, so Ms. Welsh.
So this is a um. This policy is um. Is a a policy that a policy we've currently had, but it has been revised to reflect um the changes in the um in the um what just updated for us. And it basically uh talks about the um, first of all, just to get background, so um a student. The uh when the state looks at withdrawals, of course, we have students who withdraw all the time who there are um that they draw because they've moved out of the county, but they're going on to another school somewhere. So that this does not cover those types of withdrawals, it really covers, if you look in Comar, they reference it as a dropout. And and the definition for that is a student who, for any reason other than death, leaves school before graduation or the completion of a Maryland-approved educational program, including a special education program and is not known to enroll in another school or state-approved program during their current school year. And is over the age of compulsory ed uh attendance. So that they're referencing, they're referring to anyone that is over the age of eighteen eighteen or older. Um because school is compulsory from ages five to eighteen. So it's those students who have withdrawn and um are interested in withdrawing or have withdrawn. And they um prior to them actually getting a diploma and graduating. And I think the most important piece of this is, and it is in Comar, this requirement, is that when students um have expressed an interest to withdraw, when we have knowledge that they are going to uh withdraw that um they must, that the we, the system, like the the school per se, must have a uh conference with the student and the parents of the student, and they first need to make sure that the parents are also aware of the fact that the student intends to withdraw, because that's an important piece of it. And then they also um they in this conference, it's sort of like um an exit interview and they talk about possible. Are there any interventions that they maybe can put into place to meet the individual needs of the student, to encourage them to stay in school? Um and then um look at the possibility of other educational options so that the student does have the ability to to um, you know, fulfill their their um their degree or their diploma. And then um they really, they wanna find out specifically from the student, well, what are your reasons? Why do you wanna withdraw from school? Uh ultimately, there's nothing we can do if the if the student decides they want to withdraw after eighteen and the parents are in agreement, then that's then that what that's what needs to happen, but of course, as a school system. You know, that's the last thing we ever wanna see with any of our students because our whole goal here is to be able to make sure that they graduate with a diploma and have some options, you know, when they leave the school system. Um so it really pretty much is just a rewrite of of what we had previously, it picks up our format. And it also references much of what is in quick Comar as a requirement for what we need to do as a school system.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, colleagues, I'll now open the floor for discussion. Any questions or comments for Ms. Welsh? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Welsh, if you could bring this policy back uh for action at our next committee meeting.
Okay.
Alrighty. And our third policy for discussion is the revising and merging of policies zero one thirteen, school boundaries, attendance areas, um policy fifty one ten point two attendance, policy eighty three ninety one boundary changes, and policy twenty five twenty five seventy, closing of school buildings, Ms. Welsh.
So um I've I've wanna first say um I I put it um and Cindy, when you post it. Um you'll see that um that I put a name, so we have like all these policies out there, so what do we wanna call this policy? So I did put a name, but certainly I'm open to any um changes. I called it geographic, I think I have a spelling error there, but geographic boundaries of attendance areas and the consolidation of schools. Because we're putting two the two together now. And the reason the consolidation or the closing of schools are is included is because in um House Bill four thirty seven, I realized that has not gone to the governor yet for a signature, but it did pass through the General Assembly. And in that particular bill, I think it's that bill, it actually um talks about giving the authority to close or or consolidate schools back to the Board of Education. Previously, there was a education article four dash one twenty that said that the authority lied was with the superintendent. Um and the other thing I did wanna point out is that in each of these um policies, I have started using the language superintendent. Um now, if something happens in the process in the next uh what twenty some days, cuz several days have gone by since the tenth. But that shows that these bills did not get the governor vetoed them for some reason. Then, of course, I would put CEO back in there, but the the language in, I think, four thirty seven does reference that the CEO would be changed, that language to superintendent, so I do have superintendent in right now. And this bill does incorporate the closure of schools. So um I uh I did take the language, the geographic boundaries of attendance areas in the con consolidation of school because that's sort of basically what it is. So um the if you look at the policy statement, it talks about um what uh your decision-making, your thinking behind when you're making uh decisions to um close, I'm not close, but consolidates, or not consolidate, excuse me. To change geographic boundaries of the attendance areas for schools because it's usually related to um the uh the physical the economic practical use of physical resources, and this is your original language and the po uh some of this is that I use. The implementation of the educational programs, also um the importance of the defining these uh attendance areas, the boundaries for them thus so that it promotes student achievement, positive school climate, efficient use of district resources. Um and the best uh also they will be determined to develop the best uh utilization of school facilities again, in support of the educational objectives um and looking at school capabilities and capacities, transportation and student assignment stability. So those are all the big pieces there. Um the other thing is that in either combining uh consolidating schools or changing the boundaries. The other issue is that we wanna recognize the value of diverse and inclusive school populations. And that um in your policy statement, I added is committed to equitable boundaries of attendance area and school consolidation decisions informed an in-depth analysis of data and public uh commentary. So the data is critically important in terms of just looking at, you know, student enrollment and the capacity of the building and also like the age of the building, many, many factors go into, and you'll you'll see this in this in this policy. But the uh but an analysis, but it also is critically important to get public input as you go through the process, as you well know from the just recently what you went through. So this just sorta um the pu- the purpose then is to establish an equitable process for the determination of geographic boundaries, attendance areas and the consolidation of schools. There's a few definitions and then we get into the standards. So if you look under the standards, if you keep going down Cindy to standards A. You will keep, okay, keep, just so I can see everyone down to twelve there. You see all of the factors that go into making decisions related to um either um changing the boundaries of attendance areas or else um possible closure consolidation of schools. Um many of these are dictated by Comar that you're required to look at, but these are other things that um and when I looked at our administrative procedures were things that both in the boundary administrative procedure and the closure administrative procedure were things that they also had included. So I put all all together since we're addressing both of these. Um so in the law, it says that it is the superintendent's responsibility to provide a recommendation or a proposal um after she has uh he has done extensive review of all these factors and analyzed it and that this review process uh should occur on at least on an annual basis. Um and so I have, the next section says that a committee appointed by the superintendent consisting of but not limited to the executive ca- ca- her executive cabinet or his executive cabinet as well as any other um members that are needed to be on the commi- committee. They must take in cer- consideration all those factors and really do a systemic study of them. And then if need be, provide recommendations for uh boundary changes of the attendance areas or consolidation of schools when it's appropriate. And that review that they should do should be done at least on an annual basis so that we're constantly paying attention to what's going on with our schools. And what the needs are and what the needs of our students are so that we're, you know, we're providing the best possible um um building, I guess, to be able to educate our students. Um so after they do this analysis and everything, they provide a recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent will review the recommendation and and then if in fact he or she approves the recommendation, then that proposal would go to the board for approval. Um first to proceed with the community information meetings and then a public hearing to receive community input. So if you look at number E, so can you just scroll up just a little bit Cindy, so we can see the whole thing? So a number E says um or letter E says um that uh now this comes out of Comar for closure of schools, but it certainly doesn't hurt to inform the public when there's uh gonna be uh public informational sessions uh and then certainly hearings on the um uh changing of boundaries also, because parents uh my experience has been parents are very concerned whether it's you're closing a school or you're changing the boundaries and their child's gonna have to go to another school. So this uh talks about adequate notice to parents and guardians of the students in either the uh attendance areas where we're considering that, well, this specifically addresses closure by the board. Um so that they have, and this comes out of the Comar, of what they need to do. And then um the the parents of both the school that's being closed and the school that's receiving students from the closed school. They are supposed to be receiving the notification that these informational sessions and then the uh hearings are gonna be coming up. Um the um the the at the informational meetings, the superintendent is required to provide any information that board requests. Um for example, enrollment projections, demographic information, facility utilization data, and any other information that the board might request. And then at the public hearings, the um the board will accept oral and written testimony. Uh can you proceed a little bit further Cindy to the next page? I think it's the next page, yes. Um so then after the complete uh community input process and um I I add a public board meeting, then the board shall decide whether to approve the superintendent's approval for either the change in the geographic bound bound, the geographic boundary uh that's, I take it back. Geographic boundary changes of the attendance areas or the closures of schools, and that the decision shall be in writing. Um if the just if we're talking about closure for the school, the um the these board must also in writing explain what the rationale is and what the impact on the factors are. So there's twelve factors you saw previously, there has to be uh something in writing that would say we made this decision based on, let's say, uh this this these schools, this particular school is um has issues with facility issues. The the enrollment has like is not as great in that area, needs to be in another area, there could be a variety of reasons that you might make a a decision. Um and then as far as uh when the decision must be made, it needs to be made no later than April thirtieth of of a school year so that if there's time, parents have the information, everyone has the time, the system has time over the summer to do the changes they're gonna need to do. Um and then finally, um when the notification of the board's decision goes out. Um they um there there also has to be notification in that notification indicating that um the parents of these schools that are impacted absolutely have a right to appeal the board's decision to the State Board of Education. So that is sort of it, it's really just a legal requirement. I my goal was to try to consolidate the all the different pieces to it, but I will say this is a very rough draft. And certainly you have different thoughts about how you would like this occur or how you wanna do it or whatever, please, you know, let me know. I'm open for any suggestions cuz we're really certain the beginning of this.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, colleagues, any questions or comments for Ms. Welsh? Vice Chair Fields.
Uh in terms of demographic data, do we consult at all with the county planning board? So that when we're looking at boundaries and school closures, that we understand uh projections for the future in terms of population growth or population decline in certain areas of the county?
So that I don't know, and as you're talking, as you were asking that question, I was wondering, I I can't imagine we don't, but I don't know that for a fact. But I'm wondering if uh we should be requesting that we have um the people who do this work maybe come to the next committee to sort of give you more details. I mean, this is a an important piece, you know, uh of your work and it is probably parents are highly invested in this process because of the impacts where their child's going to school. So I, you know, I think it's valuable for you to have all the internal information of how they go through the process. I could certainly ask Dr. Golson if I if it would be possible to invite these people to the meeting.
That would be helpful because as a response. That would be helpful because as the responsibility shifts to the board, um I want to be clear what factors we're considering. When we make these decisions um going forward.
Okay, I will check with with Dr. Golson.
Or member Briggs.
Thanks, Chair, uh Sir Henrys. Um so Ms. Welsh, I just had a um a I guess a comment here about the policy. In the event that there is an appeal, I think it it feels right to me that we have a kind of a. Not necessarily contingency plan, but something that how how we would approach that, you know, because I can imagine that that's gonna be very challenging if. Families are relocating from one school to the other, but the community is pushing back against that. Um and we kind of need to adjust our approach while still taking into account the safety of students, which is another big issue and kind of a competing priority. I wonder if maybe we can kind of identify some language around, and this could be pulling from like other, you know, other bill language somewhere. Gets to this in a in a way so that we can have like a plan in place.
Okay.
Remember Boozer Strather followed by Board Counsel.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna follow up on the suggestion that um members of the board who didn't serve through this. Current boundary initiative um receives more information because the website goes deep into what we just went through. For two years and it is um it was significant. Um I think I was in at least ten. Um Zoom forums over two years. Um Dr. Goldson did extend the timeline of the work. Because because of pandemic disruption um and all that data about. We do have an expert on staff who receives all that data, right? The planning board data and all of that and um. And it's it's pretty much all recorded in these significant presentations. So I think that would be extremely valuable to to any board members who missed that. Because one thing you may or may not know is that we still have to address the high school boundary. Um decisions that were made. Dr. Goldson did delay that for a year. And uh that is going to now be on us. And I sat in those meetings that that I don't know if they're all recorded and available to you. We did a lot of breakouts. So um in some ways, we may find ourselves possibly faced with starting a new with this change. Because every board mem- you know, we are new board. So this is quite significant. And um I would urge any new board member to get all the data you can on that last process. It's all archived on a website. But there is more conversation to be have with Dr. Coldson before her departure there, or you know, when you can be on that. So I'm glad we're talking about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley.
Uh thank you, Board Chair. I just wanted to say a couple of point, uh I make a couple of points. First, uh if this is an annual review. It would only come to the board if the uh CEO or the superintendent decided to make a change. So I just want to make sure the board understands that. I know we've just come across this issue with charter schools. So the only time a decision would come to the board is if there is a requested change. So it's it's reviewed annually. If nothing's done, it doesn't come to the board. So I just want to make sure you all understand that. And the second point with reference to appeal language, uh which typically with an administrative decision, if it's appealed, the decision is not stayed. So the board would still implement what it decided. So if the board wanted a different backup plan. You need to let us know so that we know what language we're including in the statute. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Briggs.
Yeah, and I I guess this is this is gonna be for Ms. Welsh and um also Mr. Whitley, um which I'd love your perspective here. Because to your point around if we appeal the state, then obviously we're moving forward what was agreed to. And if something changes, if that is appealed and if, you know, for whatever reason, now we're going back to the original process. Then we'd have to have some um some some kind of, we don't want to overcomplicate this. So like, there needs to be some way to address that while also not overcomplicating this process. Um so maybe I'll just touch base with you offline. And then also, I wanted to say to what Board Member Boozer Strather was mentioning um around. You know, what already existed. I just wanted to see if languages, we're kind of having this new superintendent that's coming in. And we may have an interim for a period of time and the language doesn't really speak to interim superintendents. And the board obviously is, this is getting passed down to us. So this is after the superintendent has had this, you know, in in addition to our team kind of doing this evaluation process. Um and then there's a a proposal. Um and I don't, I I want to be clear, not not pass it down. Because I just want to be clear around the word that I use, but just to say that this is being handed off to us. Okay. Um so once this is being handed off to us, I just wanted to see if there was uh if you think it makes sense to have some language in there around the superintendent. I'm also kind of a little worried about, I've had parents reach out to me about this in particular. Um and people continue to reach out to me about it. And um you know, I can imagine that if we have like a year long search for for a superintendent. You have an interim and this process is halted, if it also makes sense to have something in there. Just again, a a sentence or something to address address that.
Mi- Ms. Welsh, if you want to respond.
Policy and administrative procedures, of course, are so that you can function regardless if you have the real superintendent or your interim superintendent. So um ideally, we have everything in place. We know what we're doing. We have a process. And they and of course, the administrative staff, the executive level staff and all the other people that are involved, like with facilities, CIP, that whole group. They are doing the research and the and the studying what they have. What you want is a school system that can function. And have these things in place and they bring it then to the interim and the interim would then make a decision and then send it forward to the board. Um so I think um the the conversation today about ensuring that this is a really tight process in place. You know, that we've incorporated everything and and I do like your idea, um Board Member Boozer Strather going back to the website to look at all the things that did occur. Just to make sure that we have everything uh set up and in place so that whatever we have to deal with next year, you know, it's there. It's then we can operate no matter who, uh whether we have an interim or a permanent superintendent.
Okay, any further discussion? Do you guys hear? Okay. All right, any further further discussion, colleagues? Okay, uh so Ms. Welsh, if you want to bring this back, um I know some revisions were discussed. Um so we could just bring it back for discussion.
And I I will check to see about um if uh Dr. Golson would allow for us to have some staff from administration to come in. And really sort of talk in detail about the process. I think that might be really helpful for everyone.
Thank you. Let's back for discussion. All righty, moving along. All righty, um tonight, there are no policies for reviewer action. Um recommendations, so which is six point O. So on March twenty three, twenty twenty three, five policies were approved by the full board to seek public comments. Um and comments were received. Um these policies will be voted on tonight and forwarded to the full board as first reader. Um the first one is our draft policy, student sunscreen use.
So that policy actually received um loads of comments and it seems that everyone's very, very pleased with having the sunscreen policy. Um they feel that that was important for um students to be able to carry sunscreen and put it on when they're outside. And I have to take the chance of being, you know, risk of sun damage and everything, especially for certain students to have certain medical conditions. Where they absolutely need protection from the sun, but they were all very positive um of comments. So nothing to change and I just thought they were positive.
Okay, dokey. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues may have a motion to forward to the full board. The new draft policy, student sunscreen use with the recommendation um as first reader at the April twenty seven board meeting.
So moved.
Second, properly moved in second. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes and policy will be moved to full board uh with the recommendation for first reader. Um next up is revised policy zero one twenty one, people first language, Ms. Welsh.
Um so there was um one pulse, one statement that um the comment that said they were in favor of the of the, actually two, I should say that. Um we're in favor of it, but there was one person that asked the question, um I'm not a hundred percent clear what they're asking. But it appears that they want to ensure that um I'm thinking that classroom teachers are aware of this. And are and um so that there are resources to support the implementation. They talk a lot about language links. So I'm thinking they want to make sure, I I'm not sure if that's for the teachers or for the students, but they say um. Provides an op- no, provides an opportunity to communicate orally with parents. Is there a similar program that the county could use for written communication? Uh so the policy itself is addressing within the school, the operation of the school system. That uh basically you're prohibiting um staff from using language that um that um. Does, you know, that you're not using people first language, you know, you're referencing uh the say saying the language like the examples. Disabled student versus a student with a disability. Um and you do prohibit this. And we did end up putting language in the policy also as an implementation requirement that the um that the um superintendent make sure that there were. Um um uh professional development activities um designed and implemented to ensure that people were aware of using people first language. And that not using it was um to use, to not use, that language is prohibited. So um I think I'm guessing that she just want to make sure there was communication about this. Um I know that um the um lang- like anything that's provided at the school level for um for students and everything. If they're not, English isn't a uh is a second language, not a first language, they will certainly provide that information to the students in their language. Um so I'm not sure if there's anything that we need to do about it, but that was just a concern that a staff member had um shared.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward to the full board revised policy zero one twenty one? People first language with the recommendation to seek um consideration as first reader at the April twenty seven board meeting. So moved.
Second.
And properly move in second, any objections? Hearing none, motion passing, the policy will be moved to full board with the recommendation to see um first reader. Um before I move along, I did want to recognize Board Member um Dr. Zippora Miller. I saw join our committee meeting. This is why I recognized you. Um moving along, vice policy fifty one twenty two, interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. Ms. Welsh, there was no public comments?
None. So there were no public comments, which is pretty amazing. I would have thought we would have received some public comments. But we don't have any public comments on this particular policy, so.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. So colleagues do have a motion to forward to the full board. Revised policy fifty one twenty two, interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. With the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader to the board, full board.
So moved.
Second, it's been properly moved in second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passes and policy will be moved to the full board at on April twenty seven for first reader. Revised policy fifty one sixty two point one, do not resuscitate orders. We had one public comment, Ms. Welsh.
And it the person just indicated that they thought the policy was necessary.
Great, thank you. All righty, colleagues, we have a motion to forward to the full board revised policy for first reader at the April twenty seven board meeting. So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any objections? Hearing none, motion passes and the policy will be moved to a full board on April twenty seven with the recommendation for first reader. Next up is revised policy fifty one eighteen point four, tuition waivers for summer school, rescission of the policy.
So we did, uh we saw, we did receive two public comments and I think that they, that the the people who provide the comments were thinking that. Uh because we were sending the policy, the uh the policy to waive summer tuition. That what we were doing was basically requiring, regardless of what your economic situation might be, that you are required to pay for summer school tuition. And the reason we actually waived it is because we're no longer charging summer school tuition. And I I believe that was in Dr. Golson's memo of the reason behind the rescission. So unfortunately, um and it was actually two staff members that uh did share that concern. Um so actually, it's it's really not a concern because we do have, everyone's has free access to summer school at this point in time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues do have a motion to forward to the full board revised policy fifty one eighteen point four. With the recommendation to see first reader at the board.
So moved.
Second, it's been properly moved in second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passing, policy will be moved to full board with the recommendation to seek um considerations first reader. All right, moving along, seven point one, follow-ups, follows from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Our next committee meeting will be May sixteen, twenty twenty three at five P M. I hope everyone is able to attend. Um and please check the board page on the P G C S website for more information and the link to join. Closing remarks, thank you everyone for a great meeting today. Um it was pretty speedy meeting. Um got good stuff. So thank you everyone for your questions, comments, and Ms. Welsh for your hard work, Ms. Allen for putting this together. Um so with that, are there any additional comments before I move along? Seeing none, colleagues, there are motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, it's been properly moved second to adjourn the April eighteen, twenty twenty three Policy Governance Committee. Any objections? Hearing none means adjourn. Good night, everyone. Thank you for joining.